Ladies and gentlemen, we'll call this meeting to work. Uh, Councilor Anna, can you confirm we have a call, sir?
Yes, sir, we do have a call.
There it is.
There, we already made it. Yes, sir, we have two hours.
Yes, if you want to record, Mr. Faust is out, Mr. Williams is out on replay. Council, you have the district of the state of Washington, so give us all for lunch.
It's out.
So, but, sorry.
I'm going to go next to you.
Second.
Any discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Both sides? Thank you, council. First item on the agenda is the executive session. I have a motion to go any executive session for legal and real estate purposes.
So, please.
Motion, right beside.
Second.
Any discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, council. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to enter executive session for legal and real estate.
So, what?
Motion, right beside.
Second.
Any discussion, council?
If they.
Discussion will make, uh, we'll return to executive session before we adjourn to it, so that is on the record. Any further discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Both sides? Definitely. We're having an executive session. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing, so this time I'll call a public hearing. Public hearing is Maconville Housing Authority, um, something I have listed, sir.
Yes.
And one question I have is the advocate question, please, people.
Yes.
Pardon me, something?
Yes, um, just as an explanation, uh, there's statutory authority that allows a housing authority that doesn't have its legal status within a city or even another county, um, to actually do a housing project in that city or county. But in this instance, it's the Maconville Housing Authority, and they want to do a project within the city of Jasper. And under that statutory authority, though, both the Jasper Housing Authority and the City of Jasper, the city council, has to, uh, consent to, uh, the Maconville Housing Authority, conducting that project inside the city. So, um, the housing authorities attorney is, I think Jackson O'Brien is here, uh, to basically put a little more flesh on these bones, is coming to the city council just to have y'all consent to them performing this project within the city, uh, and, uh, under this, uh, bond issue, what they're going to do for the project. It's not going to be a bond of the city, it's not going to be a bond of the Jasper Housing Authority. So, we won't have any liability or obligation for the project or towards the bond. It, they are just trying to meet the technical requirements that the city council has to consent to them, uh, performing that project and issuing fines for that project, uh, due to the fact that the project is going to be added to the city limits. Um, and in order to do that, we have to have a public hearing. Basically, I think, just to give a little information about the bond, answering questions that y'all have, and then, uh, Monday night at the regular meeting, uh, if y'all are okay with the project, then you would approve a resolution that basically allows the Maconville Housing Authorities to have this project in the city limits and issue fines, as called. Um, and so, uh, as part of the public hearing, I'd ask, uh, Jackson O'Brien to come up and give us a short presentation, um, but if he's got anything else that, uh, needs to be said or added, we appreciate that.
Of course, happy to be here. Thank you all for having me. Uh, if you've stolen my thunder, I'm not really sure what else I, what else I need to say, because that was, that was a great, um, a great description of it all, but, uh, but as they've mentioned, yes, this is a bond issue, so my name's Jackson O'Brien, and I'm with the law firm Butler Snow. Uh, we are bond counsel for this, for this issue. Um, so this is the Macon Housing Authority, the Housing Authority of Maconville County. Um, they are working with a developer, uh, out of North Carolina, Kayheck Properties. They own affordable housing apartments all across the southeast, um, and, and a number of projects up across the state of Georgia, one of which is here, uh, off Brooks Hollow Drive here in Jasper. Uh, this is a portfolio, uh, of projects they're doing, so this is actually going to be thirteen different apartment complexes across the state of Georgia, uh, that this bond issue is going to, uh, go to support. Um, so Kayheck owns these properties, um, they own these apartment, uh, uh, complexes. These are all rent restricted and, uh, apartment complexes. Um, and, uh, Kayheck is going to come in, they're going to do, uh, the bond issues approximately twenty-five million dollars, which will go across the entire portfolio of projects. So that's about two point four million dollars that's been allocated for the, for the Brooks Hollow apartments. Um, what's great about that, it's a forty unit complex, so that's, you know, let's call it roughly fifty-ish thousand dollars per unit that Kayheck's going to put towards improving the interior and the exterior of, of, of that, of that complex. Um, you know, of course, the great thing is, as they mentioned there, is that is at no cost to, to the, the residents of Jasper. It's at no, you know, no liability, no financial responsibility, uh, uh, to the, to the residents of Jasper. So, uh, it's, hopefully, this will be one of the, the easier things that you all consider tonight and think through. Um, but I think it's a really exciting thing for the, for the residents, uh, at Brooks Hollow. So, happy to answer any, any questions that you all might have. I am not the developer, I, I'm just the, the attorney working on this, but I, I do believe there was a, uh, maybe a one pager that was shared with the group, and if not, I'm happy to get that recirculated. That, that covers all the, the various, um, interior and exterior renovation projects that, that Kayheck will be undertaking upon that facility. So, uh, happy to answer any questions. I really appreciate the opportunity to come speak with you all tonight, and I'll, I'll pause there.
Thank you, sir. Council, do you have any questions for the gentleman?
Look, there's.
I'm. Just give me one. Can I just add something?
Yes, ma'am, please, ma'am.
Uh, Rachel Smith, just a development director. So I've actually been working with Brooks Hollow, so I'm glad that, now, because I was like, what is he talking about until he said Brooks Hollow? So we've actually been working, uh, with Brooks Hollow, getting all of their stuff ready for the DCA, doing all their environmental paperwork, doing all the, their outstanding paperwork and work. They actually have already got their approved building permit, their approved building plans. This is just a renovation, to put it in basic terms. Um, they're going in there, spending, I think it's one point, or two point one million dollars on this project, and it's gonna, um, be a whole renovation for these things. They're making everything ADA compliant, interior, exterior, no additional units, no additional, um, land, um, land creating, no, none of the things that would, I would say, would affect any sort of decision of the city assisting in the bonding.
Thank you, girls.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, council, you have in your packet something titled, "The Top Exhibit A List of Properties." Do you have that we can search?
I don't know if I do, but I'm sure I could do that from memory.
Uh, you mentioned thirteen total projects and properties. I, I just want to call potential exhibit A, that's, well, council, item number nine. Uh, that's mentioned Oak Lane for twenty-four units at three forty-four, Martin Luther King, Jacob Walbar. The city says Jasper, the county says Ober, so that would not be this project. The project you were looking at, council's item number eleven, which is Brooks Hollow, forty units, located one hundred Brooks Hollow Drive, in the city of Jasper, in Dickens County. So the one above it, it never died, is not related to us. That may be the only comment I have, is that, uh, so the city might need to be corrected.
Good, sir, thank you for that.
Yes, sir. Council, any questions or comments for the, for bond council president?
That's, that's great, thank you.
All right.
What's.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Any more staff? Yes, sir.
Right here, you may want to check, just make sure no one else here is present, uh, conveying to, uh, like, uh.
Yes, so the next question I have is, there's only staff here, other is ready, one, I'll be on this thing together. And/or any public at this time that would like to comment on this project.
Fifteen.
You're up.
No more comments, please, ma'am. I will close the public here. Like, gotcha. Next item, planning commission update, that's purpose.
My niece is sitting over there.
I love these two sitting over there.
Um, so Tuesday night, planning commission heard, um, a special use permit request made by Amsteel to, um, locate a fabrication shop, uh, over on the Confederate side behind Walmart, uh, Confederate Court, I think it is, over there. And, um, the planning commission did it, approved unanimously to issue the special use permit. Um, they are, uh, Amsteel is a national company, and what they do is they take steel parts that have already been made, and then they put weld other steel parts on it, and then everything happens offsite, and they deliver it to every bunch. So, um, they will not have a paint booth, they won't be doing anything, um, with painting, so they don't need the additional, uh, use of that in that shop. Uh, and then, um, I think that's Sunday. Thank you.
What are they making?
What are they doing, power coding?
No. So everything that they get, so they leave, like, they'll take an I-beam, and so you have a specific bar that has to, you know, says the I-beam has to be this length, and it has to have this part on the bottom.
Yes, sir.
That's what they do. They weld that part on, and then they ship it out. So, no power coating, none of that, it's already comes like that, so.
So, we'll miss it, Doc. Let's watch, this could be a question.
So the saying's gonna be power coding?
Just cover the pole and the image below.
Never, honestly, that's a good one.
That's a, that's a, that's a.
My memory's going, and that's.
So is mine, so. All right. All right. Next item, city manager's office update, Mr. Douglas, Ms. Dolman, turn it over to you, Doc.
So I'll kick things off. Um, I did want to provide an update on the status of all some projects that we have that are asking bid right now. I'm delighted to say that we did open bids for Prairie Park this afternoon. We have scanned all of the information in, received five bids, that has been sent to GMC, our consultants for the project, they are in the process of evaluating and reaching out to the companies to get any additional information that they may have missed or that they have questions on. They will be providing their recommendation to us early next week. Um, and it is our intent to bring before council at the meeting on July seventh for approval. Uh, we have a second project, which is the Gifa project, uh, for sewer rehab within our collection system. That is specifically the I-N-I remedy project for the north northwest basin, one quarter of that basin. Those bids will be opened on Tuesday, July the first, at two o'clock in the afternoon. Um, if we can get a recommendation from GMC for that project as well, has, you know, there may be additional things that they have to vet out with these, I'm not sure, but it would be our intent to bring before you, if we can, at the July seventh meeting, so approval with the contractor to go ahead and get that one kicked off. We have a third project that's out, that is that stormwater RFP that we had brought before you, the, the three different areas that we are having some issues at. Uh, I can't think of the name of one over here, Squaw Valley, um, and then on Segal, and then at the corner of Mary and Segal. Uh, we felt that those might be more attractive if they were bundled together, because they are individually fairly small projects, so bundle them together, see what we might be able to attract, uh, using some of our Olympic money to take care of those. That bid opening is July the twenty-first.
It's out.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
And we do also, Mr. Mayor, um, just out of this interest in, uh, a project we're gonna do, it's not a, a bid project, it's something we should partner with our contractors, supply the material, um, behind some of the mainstream businesses in the law, and Whitfield, uh, Dean Carroll, believe. The, one of the challenges has been, uh, we do have, um, I know we have four downtown live events, but we have mid-ends in downtown on, you know, mid-weekends. And so contractor had looked at their schedule, they wanted to go ahead and try to do it this week. We stopped them, uh, obviously, because of July unknowns, it could be up to three weeks, uh, open trench, uh, doing it, and we got July break, we got downtown live, and we do recognize their school, uh, coming up. So, the only time that we could, due to events, due to other things, is gonna be the second, will be the second Monday of August, this Monday, excuse me, off. Uh, Kim is going to, uh, notify all of the, uh, businesses in the area, that should be sufficient, uh, by the time. We spoke this week, uh, with team public safety to coordinate with the school. Uh, we don't foresee there being challenges with having sufficient time to, in short, disruptions, uh, via charity.
Sir.
Just wanted to circle back around to the, what Shannon and I talked about last week.
Um, so.
For you.
Thank you, sir. Next item?
So, the item that Ms. Anne had looked at in the package with the light poles, DG dot, excuse me, had reached out, um, in April as they are finalizing the specifications for the State Route fifty-three widening project with a proposed roundabout here at Walgreens. Um, they are looking at light fixtures to go around the roundabout, and so they asked if we had any specifications, or if we had any, um, something that we desired to see. And I asked them to provide us some options, because we do not have a specification for that. And so in the email that you'll see, they have included a picture of what their kind of standard light pole is that they use, uh, for G dot projects, and then behind the email are several pages of their specif, well, it's just one page, I guess, of their specification, and so we're looking for direction from council on whether you are good with something that is somewhat simple, um, kind of a utilitarian utility pole, or if you are looking for something more decorative. It, it is my understanding this is only for a roundabout.
Which one? Do you think we can buy that, since I was five, four, five years?
Buy.
At Bernal and, um, history.
No, the, I was wing ball since I've been on this kind of floor. What about that mixture? Yep. But before that, the Walgreens, I forced one for.
Even they're unusable.
Not for these. Those are, so that's traffic control devices, um, for those last ones.
Oh, these are slides.
They, these are just lights.
So when they go to, when they go to put in the roundabout, these lights will eliminate the roundabout itself.
I've obtained.
I think of that, same, I think I'm gonna shouldn't, but.
When sales, um, always start at the fall, somebody's.
I do.
What's that, would?
And so I may tell them that we are good with their suggested.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Excellent. Next up?
Actually, yeah.
Ms. Ware, so, uh, I believe I spoke with you all, and, uh, I think last year, uh, we talked extensively about, uh, the, uh, kind of the budget process and amendments, and so I advise you that, uh, please be, don't be surprised if we do budget amendments for twenty twenty-five, because that's just the best practice. So, uh, we met Monday with the same, uh, relating, uh, relative to the, uh, proposed twenty-five question amendments. Uh, it's in your packet, I emailed it to you as well. Uh, I was not planning on going through line by line, uh, however, I provided a little bit as a cheat sheet, coordinated, uh, working paper, uh, notes to kind of go along with the, uh, spreadsheet. And I, I do want to just kind of hit the highlights that, again, um, if you had any sort of desire to deep diving into it, uh, you can. However, I hope that the word document, um, clarifies that we did adopt the budget, twenty twenty-five general fund budget, using four hundred thirty-three thousand worth of fund balance. I do think it's important to segregate the two amounts that, from a staffing perspective, we look at, operational and capital. So whenever we say operational, that's essentially how we fund governmental services. Capital is that one-time, uh, bush hog, that one-time mower, that one-time big capital item. So you'll see up at four thirty-three, uh, two seventy-seven is operational, one fifty-six is capital. Uh, so if not the four that capital, we would use the fund balance to operate, is just over, uh, quarter of a million. Uh, the proposed budget amendments relative to an additional use of fund balance votes for some capital items that we had talked about at work session in the June second, uh, meeting, along with some, uh, additional operational, is about another two hundred fifty worth of funds. Now, what we're trying to do is kind of give you a forecast into what the twenty twenty-six budget is gonna look like, because obviously, we told you last year that it's not sustainable to continue using fund balance to balance your books. We're very wrong, however, we do have a healthy fund balance that, even with some more conservative and or aggressive, uh, changes, it could be three to six years that you could use fund balance to continue sustaining operations, uh, without doing any other, uh, radical, uh, revenue adjustments. So, with that, uh, breaking down based upon some changes of revenue that's increased, uh, even with some one-time revenue, we talked about earlier this year in April, we had a pretty successful auction. That's what I would consider one-time revenue, that we're not gonna continue to sustain that every single year. So you don't want to be misguided in thinking that any sort of additional revenue is gonna come in, you can count it for twenty twenty-six. Uh, so that's why you'll see a differentiation between even increase in revenue, but then we've extracted out the one-time revenue. So then when you add that with your one-time operational expenses, you kind of recalibrate, and if you flip the page, to about a hundred eighty worth of fund balance for twenty twenty-six. So trying to project out, keeping it within that realm of what we have said, you're gonna be in that two hundred plus or minus, projecting into twenty twenty-six. Uh, so, there also is an item breakdown, uh, in your packet that shows where there have been some, uh, additional increases. Uh, again, I might anticipate it to just go line by line, since it should be relatively, uh, easy to, to look at. Uh, this is not something we're asking for approval tonight, uh, that would obviously be a item at the July seventh meeting. Uh, like, I don't know if it's any, has anything to add relative to what we talked about Monday.
Yeah, they'll take you to another job.
Thank you.
Cool. Other questions?
Yes, sir.
So our projected use of fund balance for twenty twenty-five was what, in the budget time? Approximately?
It was right at two hundred, and how much will we actually do to use? In terms of where we at?
Do you mean?
It will, based upon the amendment, uh, it will end up being, uh, six.
It's, yeah.
Six eighty-nine, but it was originally four thirty-three. So you're adding about two hundred and fifty, we'll watch. So it's four thirty-three that we approved, and then it's going to be, um, six eighty-nine with this.
Those were those large capital expenses, that was.
Yes.
The fight.
Okay.
You can't hear it, you can't hear it, it's probably a lot before.
Too early to tell what our projected use will be next year.
You're leaving.
Relative, relative to what we predicted, I just like. I was putting you on the spot.
Uh, so, so I can be bold and say you're gonna be in the, the two to four hundred thousand. Because based upon what, what you know your digest is gonna be, growth targets historical, your operational status quo, you're still gonna be in that same realm. Because there is no additional sources of revenue, but there's also no additional unknowns of operations. Now, it changes because of the fluctuation of capital needs, and that's why I tried to break down in your notes to show how there's going to be a very differentiation of saying, this is operational, and this is capital. Because if I present to you all a twenty twenty-six budget, that's gonna be as balanced as it possibly can, I'm going to go ahead as the city manager and probably reduce capital items, because those are your bigger ticket items, and recommend funding more of your operational salaries and, and, uh, personnel.
So we've had unmergered capital expenses, some unmergered projects that have increased in this year, next year. We knew we were gonna have to use fund balance, and, and we're approaching that, just like we knew we were, based on the decision we made last year.
Yeah, and that makes sense, though. So, remember when we approved the budget in December? Uh, there were use of fund balance, capital items that were budgeted.
Yes.
So the, the amended budget would include some capital items that were not budgeted for it.
I understand that.
Yes.
That's kind of what I'm getting.
Easy.
Kind of focus on.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. Council, any further questions? Next item, sir.
So we are in the season of Lindsay's favorite time of the year, because you usually get about a couple of weeks from the audit to then start straight into the next budget cycle, uh, with government financing. You spend six months, um, planning and budgeting, and then six month audit. So, when I asked Lindsay earlier, when's her vacation, uh, she said sometime in twenty thirty-one, I think, uh, but, uh.
Stupid.
Uh, Lindsay, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but again, the, the, the one thing that I just wanted to illustrate, council, is this is a draft calendar, because we do not know, um, relative to digest, mill, et cetera, but we do have to, uh, at least try to give you some idea going into September, October, November, December, what the calendar may look like for your own schedules, because I know you've got work sessions and regular meetings, but embedded in this, uh, I just wanted to bring to your attention, September eighteenth could possibly be a special call meeting. Uh, October second could be a special call meeting. And then November twentieth could be a special call meeting. So beyond that, just take a look at the calendar, uh, please just do your best to make sure, if it's conflicting with some sort of, uh, prearranged, um, just let us know, we're trying to rework it, and we try to hit it to where we thought we could, uh, still meet a, a December budget approval, called the work factor, which will approve the budget twenty twenty-six in December. And work backwards, then we start legitimately tomorrow, when, uh, Lindsay sends out the, uh, budget templates to all the plans.
Thanks, sir.
So do we have a grasp really, at this time, on how house bills, right, things gonna impact? What are constituents' tax bills are gonna look like?
I don't know, sir. There's a lot of unknowns.
Yeah. What's that? I'm not picking those apart, I'm just.
I, I would.
I'm making a point.
I will tell you, for, for the, for the public. I will tell you, that's one of the areas I'm not gonna speculate, because, um, the way that the, the law had been written relative to all the direct randoms that were approved last year, uh, there was a lot of, um, requirements not on local governments, but on the, uh, tax assessor, tax commissioner. So we have very little, um, input and or, um, skin in the game on that.
So I got a tax bill from Boston, you know, just last week, I was a little bit surprised at, I was a little bit surprised, but just, that's on the side. Sounds like what?
Thanks, sir.
Sure.
Next one? Uh, I would like to call Chief Shearer up to probably get through a bunch of stuff in about three minutes.
Three minutes.
I just, I'm gonna explain. I'd be. Good evening, everybody, council. Um, I will be brief. Uh, part of our rollout of the Motorola radio project is we need to, uh, partner with some of our strategic agencies and their. and their governing entities to get MOUs signed to be able to utilize their frequencies in our radios in order to get those programmed in. As you're probably all aware of, the FCC governs communications. And for us to be above board and follow best practice, we need to get these MOUs to be able to operate on those frequencies. An example of that is the frequency we operate off of our license to an entity to transmit or receive from a location over a specific bandwidth. In order for another entity to use that, it's best practice to have the MOU to be able to do that. That way we're recognized as well, based off the SEC's interpretation of what we need to have. So we're reaching out to Dawson County, Cherokee, Bartow, Gilmore, and also we'd like to reach out to Gordon County as well to work on, we'll use those different entities. We've got a standard one that Mr. Siphon has looked at for the entities that would like for us to provide one to them. Some of them have their home, Dawson has their own. They've sent us, they've cited the review, which is back with some, some minor adjustments. That's something that you'll see in the packet. Hope the goal will be completed by the end of the 7th meeting. Any questions for you regarding those?
Yeah. With our measures. Chief, do you plan on presenting this in the next council meeting, MOUs?
There will be on the agenda whether or not you want consent or if you want to present it.
Council, there's already objection for the MOUs of Willis Landley, approved to be on consent. Awesome. We'll place those on the top.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Little bit.
Next up.
Mr. Mayor, going to ask Harley to come and take about, probably another minute and a half of Chief Sherer's time since he was free.
Thank you.
You get four and a half, I guess.
Go away. It's not like that.
What's the two half then?
Oh, they apologized. Very easily asked me, oh, I'm too up late. I told them I prefer you do it, but I didn't know me that. And she had to stay late.
Oh, I would have stayed up late.
She showed, I picked up the slack a little bit, but.
Thanks, ma'am.
And so.
No. Oh, okay, Amy. So on Monday, the DDA voted unanimously to adopt a tiered. Okay, we said what tiered means, three, and there's actually four levels. So a system of vendor acceptance, like a formal system, that we will have in writing as far as how vendors are accepted to come into events. In that Jasper businesses within the CBD boundary take first priority. Then a business within the DDA boundary, which is the entire city limits of Jasper. Then Pickens County businesses. And then if there are none of the type of business that is coming from House County, we will allow them at that time. Always try not to duplicate vendors and vendor type at that point. So the DDA, as a component of the city, is looking for agreement by Council on that on July 7th.
What's.
Change of your questions? Anything? That's it.
Awesome.
So there was some of this.
Yes, one, one question for you. Any documentation of that will be shared with our agenda packet, I'm assuming?
Yes, we're in the process of preparing an agenda item for the 7th. We just didn't know whether you would want that to be on consent or whether you would want to have that be just discussed out in open. Either way is fine with us. We have no preference. But yes, wanted to go ahead and at least bring it up so that you know some of the things that were being discussed at the DDA meeting on Monday and some of the actions that they are taking that we're really looking for ratification by Council to take.
What's.
I would just like to urge Council to vote what's the DDA made last week called. It was a, it was a very organized meeting, decisions were being made, sort of interaction between the entire group. And I think, quote Chairman Flavre, the trajectory that we're now on with the relationship that he and Carly are building, as well as the organization of the, of the last meeting. That was our sixth meeting this year. Last year we had five meetings. So and we've also planned, we've got plans in place for, to get up to scale our main street program with the required meetings, planning sessions, organizational meetings, all of the shaking places in the Mexico. So it's really does not, it kind of fast-paced, relying on those organs. What happens is going to be really good. And so just wanted to add that. Thanks, Carl.
Thank you. Thanks, man. Council, is this going to be a potential consent agenda? I don't know. I'm going to ask that we talk about it in the open. I think it's important for our business owners to know here locally, we're doing all we can to support them within the city, within our community, and then reaching out. So I'm not going to ask that this one consent. Next up.
Yes, sir. So we're going to see if him and or Kim E. would like to talk about easements and more other items. But, Chief.
Thank you. Yes, we want to get that cordial way. I know Amy has got an easement with power that we would like to, the process of being reviewed by Mr. Siphon. As you recall, we had gotten an easement request from Georgia Power for Me Newton Park. It's associated with the State Road 53 widening project. And their utility relocation work that they're having to do or will have to do as part of this project. They are currently already across the park. They're going to have to set a new pole and do some new, I'm not sure that if it's underground or overhead line, but it is going in a section that G DOT has designated as for utility easement. It is still across the city's property. And so Georgia Power needs to get something from us confirming that we are okay with that placement as well. So we had gotten Mr. Siphon to review that. He had some comments which are at Georgia Power right now for their kind of review and whether or not they can lose with it. And at some point here in the coming months, we would be bringing that before y'all for approval to enter into that easement agreement. That's not going to be a July 7th. I just don't think it will be.
So.
Amy.
Welcome back.
My name is Jen, I'm the director of the city of Fausbridge, we're loving with this, you know. We have received an easement request from Georgia Power to locate at our pump station located on Zola Drive, adjacent to Morgan Riddington Yard by the what's going to, what is known right now, Southwest Tier Gas Station, and soon to be a new location for Crenshaw Auto. They need electricity and Georgia Power needs to run it from our pump station. The good news is it'll be a very power electric and be able to provide a better source and reliability. Mr. Siphon had one comment, and I sent it back. We're just waiting for them to hear this. Might be July 7th.
Council, what's the legal approval, any objection for that meeting, Chris? Awesome. Thank you, man. Mr. Nicholas, any other comments?
Did not know, Mr. Mayor, if you wanted to talk about any appointments from the boards.
Yes. So there, there are a couple of topics I did want to discuss before we go back into our executive session for continuation. First is the public comment period that we have on our public meetings. It is important that we listen and hear from the public on a regular basis. And so we implemented, I believe it was sometime last year. Was it last year?
This year.
This year. A public comment period on our agendas, there is typically before our meetings, a sign-up sheet in the back that has a spot for the name of the person, their address, and the topic of which they want to discuss. There are rules and guidelines that are advertised and published on that piece paper. I actually read those before the public comment period if someone has signed up. There's no official request or mandate that the public call City Hall or send an email to be on the agenda for public comment. It is open to sign up in the back of the room until the time of the meeting. And so we encourage the public to be heard. You want to speak before your council and be part of our meeting, we certainly welcome that. There is no requirement for reservation. You can simply show up, you can sign up, and we will certainly hear from you. The other item that you mentioned, Ms. Douglas, appointments, it's come to my knowledge, Council, that we have a faculty on the housing authority, and there's also a plan to be faculty. And so I'm moving for the administration to go ahead and advertise those positions accordingly with the qualifications. We do have a letter from the housing authority, and when their members resigning for personal reasons. And so we'll go ahead and advertise those with qualifications. We look forward to our citizenry applying for those positions and needing to engage with the city and letting us here for know that they're in suffering.
Can we confirm that we appoint all of those positions?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I made that this week.
Thanks, sir.
Yes. I had a copy of the battles. That's actually Commerce Section 18.
Okay.
Yes.
And the other position is somewhere, is it kind of run out or something?
Several is stepping down for fighting zone and retail relocation of their private residence.
Which.
Yes. I have nothing further. Mr. Nicholas, Ms. Dolman?
The DDA. Okay, that's.
Yes, there is a DDA appointment coming up, and that will be taking place on our next meeting. Yeah, so that's already been advertised for interviewer slash reading has been had. And so I will be asking for the one, that information we sent to y'all in front.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. Right, Council?
Come on, what?
Yes, the question. Okay.
All right.
This time, the executive session continuation, I'm going to ask for a motion to go back into our executive session. What do you?
So me.
I have a motion, Council, thanks. Second. So just any discussion, Council? This was for the title of, and I'm looking for, I guess, legal.
Legal.
Thank you. All of that.
Aye.
Also, thank you. There's general, we're back in executive session.